Hi, so.
Jordan Bluff.
Hey, yes. How you doing?
Hello, Miss Heather.
Jordan Bluff.
Yeah, yeah. Better go look at it.
I just don't want to go for it too.
I was wondering, were you standing earlier? I was like, what's he talking about? That makes sense. That makes sense. Have somebody say later on.
Yeah.
I think it was like, uh, it was, uh, the bid or whatever for it. I don't know why it was sensitive, but it's, number twenty, item twenty-two.
Yes, we'll have it, babe.
Go ahead and call it. But it's, uh, I don't know.
On what?
Everyone ready? We're good? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the September second, twenty twenty-five city council meeting to order. I'm gonna ask for a volunteer for the invocation.
Just as a prayer, in the name of Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Dear Lord, you govern your creation, oh God, and bring it to perfection by the work of our hands. Hear the prayers of your people who ask for work, they'll enhance their human dignity and promote the upholding, the upbuilding of your kingdom. Enable them to provide for those confided to their care, either by family ties or by charity we owe to one another, for the betterment of human life. We ask this blessing in the name of Jesus, who labored with his own hands while he lived on earth. In one this with our Father. Our Father.
Good morning. Good evening. Our kingdom come. And we will be gone. What hurteth is with heaven. You give us this day our due reward. And if we give us our trust, that's Jesus. And we give the trust of Jesus. And he is not a temptation, but deliveration from evil.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any agenda amendments? I, uh, I do have one that we need to, uh, put on there, just to table the, uh, the tree permit from Will Rains that we voted to table at the last meeting, so I'll make the motion and then get a second, but, I'll make a mo- I make a motion to table the tree permit for Will Rains, located at four oh three South Neecase, to the October seventh, uh, city council meeting.
And that was at the request of the homeowner? Or the property owner?
I have a second by Councilman DeSalvo. Any discussion? Vote the motion.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carried seven zero.
Mr. President, the only thing I had was a letter I had, uh, Caitlin give out to everybody about the chickens. Do we need to put down the agenda or just give it to the administration?
I would maybe spread it.
Okay.
Under council business?
Okay, alright, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to announcements. Uh, September ninth, twenty twenty-five, we will have our recess, council meeting to adopt our FY twenty twenty-six budget and set the millage. On September sixteenth will be our next city council meeting. On September sixteenth, there's also the Hancock County Power Hour Lunch. It's the state of the city at eleven thirty AM. And I believe we do have some guests here today. We, uh, well, before we move into guests, we have a proclamation for childhood cancer awareness month?
Yes. So whereas more than fifteen thousand children under the age of nineteen will be diagnosed with cancer in the United States twenty twenty-five, pro- approximately more than two hundred and sixty-three children in the United States are diagnosed with cancer before their twentieth birthday. And cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among children in the United States. And whereas nearly five thousand survivors of children, childhood cancer, are alive in the United States today, and by the age of fifty, more than ninety-nine percent of the children, childhood cancer survivors have had chronic health problems, and ninety-six percent have experienced a severe or life-threatening condition caused by the treatment that initially saved their lives. Whereas childhood cancer is the least funded cancer by the government, and it's up to nonprofit organizations like St. Paul's Dr. Foundation, to raise much-needed funds for their cancer. Now therefore, I, Michael J. Paul, Mayor of the City of Bay St. Louis, along with the city council and all citizens, do hereby proclaim the month of September twenty twenty-five as the National Childhood Cancer Wet.
Thank you.
Um, I just want to tell y'all thank you for doing this proclamation. My child was diagnosed with cancer when he was two years old. He went through treatment for three and a half years. He's now a healthy sixteen-year-old. And it's because of the research that's done, and by y'all doing this, it's spreading the word. A lot of time, us parents are the ones doing the fight to, with St. Paul's Dr. trying to raise funds, and a lot of times we're either so busy with treatment, or there's unfortunately a lot of parents that are bereaved and can't get out and do things they need to do to raise funds. So I appreciate y'all getting the word out to the community to support organizations like St. Paul's Dr. So, thanks all of you. I appreciate it.
He did not look extra tall in that picture.
He doesn't, or he does?
If I would've looked at that, I would've told you that's good ever.
Got my heels on today.
Not passing the photography class.
Okay, we have Hancock County Resource Center with their annual report?
Actually, it's the Hancock Resource Center.
Hancock Resource.
Hi, I'm Rhonda Rhodes, and I'm the executive director of the Hancock Resource Center. Before I talk about the Resource Center, let me just take a moment to thank all of you for the childhood cancer proclamation. Most of you probably know that my son is also a childhood cancer survivor. He was diagnosed with Hodgkin's lymphoma when he was twelve, and he's now twenty-eight and, uh, doing very well. So, I do appreciate it. It's, it's a tough road to go down, but, um, it's always helpful when you have a community of support behind you. So, all that to, uh, let's talk about the Hancock Resource Center. So, um, I am not here to ask for money. Um, when we, when we asked to be put on the agenda in Waveland, Jay Japan, he said, are you asking for money? And I said, no, but if anybody has any money and they want to give it to us, we certainly will take it. Um, so, I'm not here to ask for money. I'm here because, um, once a year when we publish kind of our annual report, we try to make it around to all of the city councils and the board of supervisors to update you on what we've been doing and, and the impact that we have had on the community. Um, we are a five oh one C three nonprofit. We're designated as the Community Development Corporation by, um, HUD. We're a Mississippi nonprofit corporation. We file a non-ninety tax return, and we are audited. We have a, um, single audit for every year because we receive, uh, more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funds. Uh, you can find that audit and our tax form on our website, uh, if you have any questions about our financial transparency. Um, in a lot of ways, we function kind of like a housing department for the county and the cities, but not officially, of course, if you haven't designated us as that. But we do fill a lot of the functions that a housing department would fill if you had one. Um, we also have been designated officially by the county as the Long-Term Recovery Organization for Hancock County. So, um, should we have a, a disaster of any kind that would require additional assistance beyond the init- the initial response, uh, the county would turn to us for things like, um, donation logistics, managing donations long-term, uh, checking in volunteers and trying to, you know, keep track of who's going where, things, things along those, those, things along that nature. And then also when we have housing damage, um, we often sit in the EMA during the event, and when the calls start to come in with damage that people have to their homes, we're actually sitting in the EMA taking those calls. Um, and, and so that we have, we are in the front line of understanding what the need is, so we can go to our funders and try to get funds in when we need assistance. Of course, with Katrina, you know, that money was just rolling in crazy, like, it was just kind of crazy, but the storms we've had since have not been like that. And so we've had to really kind of frame the need and talk about how many homeowners had any. Um, fortunately, that's been minimal the last couple of years. We had, um, we're still doing some roof repairs from Zeta and from, um, started with the I, Ida. Ida. I had Iris in my head for some reason. But anyway, so we're still doing some roof repairs from, from those storms. Okay. Um, also I want to talk, a lot of the work that we do is with people that are either homeless or in need of rental assistance. And, um, in, in Hancock County, last year, we worked with nine people that were living on the street, um, in various places, and helped them to get into house. And so, it doesn't sound like a lot, but several of those nine have been on the street for more than a year. And so it takes a long time to engage someone that's homeless to get them to trust you enough to, to help them get into housing. Plus, I mean, if you live outside, there's not a whole lot of rules, right? I mean, but you live inside and you have to keep your house clean and you have to pay your rent, you, you, so, it's, sometimes it's a challenge for people to, I, I'll, I say color between the lines, you know, that's difficult. Um, we also house nine veterans in the Hancock County area, in addition. Um, overall, across the coast, we house sixty-nine veterans, but nine of those were here in Hancock County. So, um, you heard me say across the coast, so several of our programs go beyond the county. Uh, we have, um, uh, most of our housing programs serve the entire lower six. Uh, we are the primary agency for Hancock and Pearl River Counties, but we also serve quite a few families in Harrison County. If, uh, the other agencies in Harrison County don't have the resources, in particular, if they encounter a family with children, that is someone that we're going to, to serve, even if they're not in our county, because we never want a child to be on the street or in a car, or, you know, in a situation where they're, they're not inside. So you can see, and I'm not gonna read you the report, because you guys can obviously read, but, um, you can see on our graphic on the front cover kind of our, a, a snapshot of some of the things that we do. The fourteen million, seven hundred and eighty-six, nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, so almost fifteen million dollars in economic impact. That number comes from the direct assistance that we, that we have paid. We have either paid landlord, we pay contractors to do home repairs. Um, it may also include donated items, because you, you probably know, we work with Salvation Army and Toys for Tots to do the holiday assistance programs, so that families don't have to drive to Harrison County to get those services. Um, it also includes the value of homes that would have otherwise foreclosed if we had not been able to intervene and assist. I have, um, five nationally certified HUD counselors. Your, uh, fellow councilperson there is, is one of them. And that is a very challenging national test that they take to become certified. And once they're certified, um, they're qualified to do foreclosure counseling. Um, other than stopping a sale, we pretty much can do everything else, and we don't charge for that. And there's no income limit for that. Um, if someone is, doesn't matter if their houses, if their primary home is in foreclosure, their income doesn't really matter at that point. And so we can provide those services. Um, you may also know that we work with the Hancock County Youth Court. Um, we started out much like the youth, like CASA, advocate, advocates for children. We advocate for the parents. We work with the parents to try to help them get their act together, so that they can, um, either retain custody of their children or regain custody of their children and be more stable when they're done working with us. We just started a new program this year with the Family Treatment Court called, uh, Sober Living Program. And as far as we know, it's the first one of its kind, actually, in the country. Um, it's a scattered site sober living program, where most sober living programs are kind of institutional, and it's like, all of the residents live together in one facility. Um, these are families that are living in the community, and we're supporting them from a housing and, and stability standpoint, and then the treatment court is supporting them from a standpoint of staying sober with counseling and drug testing and so on. So we just started out, we have five families enrolled in that right now. Um, okay, let's see what else. I'm not, so we have a program listing in the, um, annual report. We have two new programs for twenty-four. One is a, we call it SLIP, Seniors Living in Place. Ironically enough, it is about trying to create a safe environment for older adults to live at home, and so, you know, prevent things like slips and falls. Um, so, we can do a s- small modifications for older adults that will help them be safer in their home. Things like maybe converting a tub to a shower, or in, improving the address on the outside of the house so that nine-one-one can find them, or improving lighting, or leveling the floor if they need to use a walker. So these are things that, that's a new program that's funded by HUD, and we will do a hundred houses in that program over, well, we're halfway through it now, but a hundred houses by twenty twenty-six, end of twenty twenty-six. Um, also in the report is a little bit more detail about the graphic. So if you see a number like the fourteen million number and you're like, God, what is that? You can open up on the inside, it'll tell you a little more. We also have a, a new veteran housing program for, um, veterans that are unable to get a lease in their own name, either for legal reasons, if they have background issues, or credit issues, or some, some sort of issue that prevents them from getting a lease in their name. We can actually sign a lease and over the next six to nine months, work with that veteran, improving their situation until they can take that lease over themselves. That's called the GPD tip. Tip means transition input. Um, y'all know about the Hancock Youth Leadership Academy, and we are very thankful for, uh, the city often lets us use facilities for our meetings for those programs, and that's very, very helpful to us, and we definitely, and lots of you have participated um, in that program as well, and I think it's great for our young people to see all of you very involved in the community. If, if they see you at the Hyla meetings and then they see you at the community, it's like, oh wait, like, you know, they, they see you, uh, talk in the talk and walk in the walk, I guess I should say. Alright, couple more things I'm gonna point out. I did give y'all brochures for our veteran services and for the Resource Center. If you need those for anything. You also all have a little business card in your packet, and on the back of the business card is a QR code. If you encounter someone that is, needs assistance in any of the programs that I just talked about, or anything else that you know that we do, they can scan that QR code on the back of that card, and it will connect them right into our online request for assistance. Um, so it's our intention to get these out to law enforcement, so if they encounter someone on the street, that they can give them a direct scan. And yes, most of the folks on the street do have phones, so they can get to that form to fill it out. They don't all have phones, but a lot of them do. Um, we have the, um, twenty years since Katrina. We started not quite, we started in, well, the first thing that we started was in two thousand and six, the Hancock County One Stop. And then we merged with the Long-Term Recovery Committee in two thousand and eight and became the Hancock Resource Center. So, we haven't actually been around for twenty years yet, but we've been doing Katrina work pretty much since, you know, since we got organized locally and we all could dig our way out. And so this graphic shows what we have been able to track since we started. It doesn't mean that it is everything, because, believe me, there's way more than nine hundred and ninety-three homes that have been rehabbed or rebuilt. These are just the ones that we know we had a hand in. Um, also, like, three million dollars in donated labor. We certainly know there was a lot more volunteers here than that, but this is just what we've been able to track, um, since we started tracking. Um, and then finally, um, y'all probably know about our Crawfish Cookoff fundraiser that we hold every April. And so, we put a save the date in here. Um, that is our big fundraiser. That funds the, we're about ninety percent federally funded. Um, the other ten percent comes from, um, private grants and donations. Like, Hyla, the leadership program, is completely privately funded. We get no public money for that at all. So it all comes from private donation, private foundations. And so we, we close that gap with this fundraiser. And also, we have two fall fundraisers, the Saints Football Pool and the Super Bowl, um, pool, which we have a flyer in your packet, I think. If, we have about twenty squares left that we need to sell by Friday, so please, if you're into that, or know anybody that might want to spend fifty dollars and possibly one hundred, we could use your help. Um, but anyway, those fundraisers kind of close the gap between things that might not be covered by federal funding or administrative costs that we can't capture in our, in our federal grants, because that money is very, um, there's a lot of compliance associated with, with federal spending, as you can imagine. And, and we're very careful about that, which, which I think is why, you know, this new administration and the focus on, on the way federal spending is going right now. It hasn't, hasn't really impacted us too much yet. I'm not saying it won't, but most of the programs that we have are programs that have a lot of accountability built into them, and so it seems like that is what you need to not be cut. I don't know. It's just my observation so far. So, um, please, if you have any questions for me, please, click.
I did have one, kinda, I may have misheard you. But in the beginning, you mentioned, uh, about possibly being desi- or that, that you're not designated as the housing authority. Is that something that is typical in some of the other?
No, no. So, most cities that are the size of Bay St. Louis and Waveland and Diamond Head, they, they don't have enough resources to have a housing department. Um, so, a nonprofit, a lot of times, kind of picks up some of those functions. Um, and you don't, I mean, that wouldn't be, you have a housing authority here that you share with, with Waveland, the Bay Waveland Housing Authority, and it's different than what we do. They do a completely different kind of business. But things like, if you have people whose homes are falling apart and they can't repair them, where, where would you send them? And if you were a, a larger city, those cities have planning departments or housing departments, and that's where they would go. Bay St. Louis doesn't have a housing department, so a lot of times we get those. Does that answer your question?
I was just wondering, is there, I guess, is there official designation that would help with that, or?
Not now. I mean, if we were to have a, a disaster that were, that was localized to Bay St. Louis, that may be something that would be valuable to help us get grant funds or, or to help us in, you know, work with the city, but at this time, it's not really necessary. We did do a temporary, um, declaration with Waveland when they condemned the apartments down there. The, the mayor declared an emergency, and then we were able to step in and get the housing authority from Region Eight to come in and do emergency housing vouchers, to get a lot of those people moved out of there. So, we can connect resources together if something like that comes up, but, um, just in general, from a day-to-day, it's, it's not. You would be covered by the disaster of the county, if the county had a disaster, us being the Disaster Recovery Organization for the county, unless you opted out of that for some reason. It would, it would also cover the city.
I just didn't know if that was something we needed to discuss.
It's not, yeah, it's not, it wouldn't benefit, it wouldn't necessarily, it might cause you more trouble than it's worth if somebody didn't like you doing it, so, you know, it's not necessary at this point. Any other questions for me?
Is y'all funding, like, most government agencies, the fiscal year October?
Well, we have, so we have, um, nine different federal agencies, and they all have the different fiscal years. So it's, so our fiscal year is July one, because our biggest agency's fiscal year is July one. But a lot of our other grants are ten-one. No, no one is calendar year. No, no, not a single agency. We do the annual report on the calendar year because that's what most of the stakeholders, it's easiest to wrap your head around, but none of our, like, we have a grant that's like August thirty-first to July thirtieth or so, or August thirty-first to September, I don't know, it's, it's a weird, they're weird, they're weird years. All of them are all different. Any other questions for me? If you, if you think of any questions, if you come across anybody that you think may need help, if you come across anything, anything and you're like, I wonder who does that, please feel free to give me a call. Most of you have my cell phone number. Um, certainly Linda knows how to get in touch with me. I'd be happy to, even if it's not something we do, to talk through it and see if we can figure out where it's supposed to live if it doesn't live with us. Um, you know, when, when I got into this twenty, I'm a nurse, by the way. At the time of Katrina, I had a healthcare consulting business. I have absolutely zero formal education in community development or housing, like, none, not a, not a minute, not one class. Um, so, I've learned along the way out of necessity, and, you know, I, I feel like after Katrina, it, we can figure it out. Whatever it is, we can figure it out. Alright, thank y'all for listening.
Thank you for your service. Thank you. She probably needs to read that anyway. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and enter, or call to order our public hearing. Uh, it is five fifty-six for the FY twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget. Uh, is there anybody here that would like to come up to the podium and discuss the budget? Okay. Uh, is there anyone on the council with any comments or concerns? Any amendments? Okay. Well, we will go ahead and close the public hearing at five fifty-six, or adjourn, adjourn the public hearing for the FY twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget. Is there a motion that needs to be made to adjourn that, or no? Uh, I'd like to call for a motion. Okay, we got a motion from Councilwoman Moynihan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Holmes. Any discussion? Vote the motion.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried seven zero. Okay, we're gonna move on to the minutes approval. I'll call for a motion to approve the minutes of August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion.
A motion by Councilman Smith. Do I have a second? Any discussion? Vote the motion.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried seven zero. A public forum. Uh, Ms. Connie from, about, Ms., is this ca-
Voight.
Voight.
Voight, yeah.
I'm not Connie.
Um, I'm Nikki Moon at two thirty-three Cary Court. And, um, I'm bringing to your attention, as I understand, we now have someone that deals with blighted property. I don't know if we never had that before, but, um, I found out from FAB, that you can actually go on and register blighted property and, uh, file a formal complaint. Um, I have, uh, gone to both my councilman and the mayor on a piece of property that is adjacent to my backyard on Ballard Court. Um, this year, it is owned by a person by the name of Carrie Freego. I, I'm assuming it's a woman, the way it's spelled. I don't know if any of you know her, but that's what's on the parcel with the county. I don't know if any of you know her, but that's what's on the parcel with the county. Um, I took pictures and videos starting back in April. Um, I received responses both from Kyle and from the mayor. They did mow the property finally on the seventeenth of August. Um, Connie's here because she can vouch for the fact that I have no idea what kind of varmints are in that property. It is so disgusting, none of you would want it in your neighborhood, much less right next toward your backyard. Um, there's a boat, there's a, um, a, a, um, a roof that is half off, but there's storage area. There is a, an RV. There is a car, there is a trailer cover, there are tires and tires. And I hope no child goes wandering back on Ballard Court and finds himself in that mess. Um, Jerry Hughes is here. Jerry lives about four doors down. She has been asking for this to be resolved for ten years. Ten years. I think it's kind of long enough. Okay? I will defer to my friend. Connie knows she's getting creatures from across the street.
Between the forest, the forestation across the street, or Shieldsboro Three and that property, there are rats, mice, armadillos, and that's snakes, venomous snakes, friendly snakes. Just an influx of wildlife. It's been disturbed and it's moving around in my house, not inside. But you can still come over. But, um, it's, it's an attractive nuisance. I mean, my boys, if they were still boys, it would be all over that. And, and I'm telling you, the way that all is planned in there, that that would come down on them. And as a mother, I would be a raving lunatic and sue the owner for I don't know how much money, and probably the city for not taking care of it, because I've been griping about it for almost four years. And sending emails and talking about it. And the city needs to step up and do something, because we can't do it. And I've provided the name, the same name, as well.
Do any of you all know her?
I, I, I do. Yes, ma'am.
I mean, how could you just let that happen?
And I'll, I'll, I'll reach out. I don't know if there's a process that we could take.
Yeah, Vince, Vince has sent letters and everything. Next up, he take it to court, or whatever we need to do to, to declare minutes.
Or, yeah, you could, you could, especially with this route might be, you just set it for a public hearing.
Public hearing. Yeah, like they're doing.
I think this is a grandparents' house at one time. Uh, I'm not sure who, you know, if anyone's living in the house now or not.
No, no, it's, it's, it's behind...
I know where, yeah, it's behind the house.
Yeah, it has now been renovated, right.
That has been renovated, and he actually wanted to purchase the land at one time.
Yeah.
Well, I guess what we can do is, I guess, set the, come up, take the process for the public hearing and then...
Yeah, we can, I can get a resolution together at the next meeting to set it for a public hearing. So, the public hearing would be probably the first week of November.
And Mike, I'm assuming we haven't, Vince never heard back, any response from the...
Yeah, they went and cleaned, well, they went and cut grass a little bit around there. That's about as the extent of it. And they was supposed to get back in there when he got back in town the following week. I think some of that stuff is, is the brothers, one of the brothers.
Well, Ms. Nikki, do you know the address?
Yep, they have the parcel number.
Can you bring that to me real quick? I'll send an email and get this kinda...
They're going by checking. I hadn't seen anything else done there.
Um, yeah, well, will you make sure Caitlin has them, 'cause I'm gonna put those in the minutes.
Process of writing it. We need to declare it, then we can do that.
All right.
And, and whatever, whatever the timeframe is, first of November.
And they mow, they mow the middle, but beyond the middle, there, it's, it's so high, you can't even hardly see the scout that's back there. But Tom says he would be happy to part it out and give the money to the city, because he could probably make five to ten thousand dollars. It's a vintage vehicle.
Well, I would recommend being here for the public hearing, especially.
Actually.
Yeah, I think it's a blazer back there, a boat, a trailer. Um, I'm not even sure what else.
And Mike, that wouldn't be the attempt at cutting grass. It wouldn't be substantial efforts towards getting that cleaned up. So, I don't think that would suffice it to try to prolong this out. Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. I guess we held it was fine to just put it out there. And see if we can get it so great. Thank you.
Well, that's what they keep getting told, and that's why it's going either this way or, or to the court department to have it.
Well, I just, I just sent a notice to go ahead and get our resolution drafted for the, the next, next meeting, so we can at least start the process of, of talking about it. And also, I, I would request for y'all to, um, make a motion to spread the pictures submitted by Ms. Moon on the...
I make a, I make a motion to spread the images from Ms. Nikki Moon. Uh...
That, that's not, that's irrelevant for what we're...
For what this is.
Yeah, yeah.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Smith. Any discussion? Both the motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries seven-zero. Okay, nobody else has signed up for the public forum, so we're gonna move on. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Move on to the mayor's report.
I'm good.
I'm good. All right.
I didn't think I had anything.
We'll move on to, uh, council business. Before we go into the first, uh, motion, I want to go ahead and call for a motion to spread the letter from Mr. Wayne Hoffman. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Salvo. Any other discussion? Both the motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries six-zero. Okay. I'm gonna call for a motion to approve the resolution to fix the tax levies for the city of Bay St. Louis, Mississippi for fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Motion.
A motion by Councilman Smith. Do I have a second?
Moynihan, seconds.
Any discussion?
On that, that, there's no increase anywhere across the board on that.
Any discussion? Both the motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries seven-zero. Any other council business needs to be brought up or discussed? Okay.
I do, I do.
Yeah, um, I would just like to put it out there, a thank you to Public Works and Mayor Favre for, uh, getting the ball rolling on the lighting situation at, uh, the pickleball courts. Uh, we had it rectified where the lights would go off at a certain time. And there was a, a glitch with the timer, but it's, it's in the works. And the excessive lighting will be, uh, quelled. So, the, the residents on Almond and Carroll, uh, are feeling pretty happy that this is coming down the pike. So, thank you.
First, I'd like to acknowledge and thank the Hancock County Library System and the Library Foundation for donating the little library to MLK Park. That has been a hit. Um, we're currently out of books, so if anyone has books they want to donate, we can use them. Uh, that been a great resource so far.
Remind me, Valvoline's at one block in my house.
Okay, yeah, there's about, room for about twenty. You can do adult books or children's books. Um, there are a couple...
Where's the, um, book, um, thing located?
It's right in the park, right by the fence. As soon as you walk in, you'll see it. It's a little blue box. And Public Works did install that, so I thank them as well. Um, now, on a not-so-nice note, but, um...
For theatrics.
I know we have Public Works, but, and I see them every morning out there, but I don't know if they're actually maintaining our park, or if they're just going to pick it up trash. So, I found this, which is our water fountain. It doesn't work. Our kids don't have water, 'cause it was under a pile of leaves by the fence. Also, I noticed, Jason, I know this is gonna come up with you, uh, we have a ton of overgrown trees and leaves and vines against the fence. So, it looked like that fence job may be bigger than what we anticipated. Have you been out there lately? So, there's about two big gaps in that fence. And it's actually, the vines and stuff are pulling the fence out. So, it doesn't look like it's really being maintained to stop more damage.
What park is that from, Val?
M.O.K. I was walking Max and wanted to give him some water and realized we didn't have a water fountain. Um, the bathrooms as well, they need to be repainted. Um, there's some tagging and some graffiti in there. There are a couple of volunteers that said they wanted to do it. I just wanted to make note that it needs to be addressed. Also, we have a couple of citizens in Ward Three. I think they have keys to the bathroom, just in case. It was like a nighttime, they needed to leave it open. But I wanted to ask, is the city actually maintaining the bathrooms? Like, are they stocking it, or is that my constituents stocking the bathrooms?
They should, we should be stocking it.
Are they opening and closing at a certain time?
We try to.
The fire department...
Yes.
Does it unless you want to call.
There's a, there's a local right there that takes care of that.
That volunteers to do it. And she does a great job. I just don't want it to be all on her, if we're supposed to be maintaining it. Also, once you're looking to possibly, I believe we have some park benches that haven't been installed out there that were meant for the basketball court. If they're still in storage somewhere, they're the, like, plastic ones. Can we get those put around the splash pad, at least two of them? 'Cause right now, there's absolutely no seating. If you went and brought your child out there, there's no way to watch them unless you're out there on the splash pad with them. And there's a lot of grassy area there. And I think that's about it.
I, uh, I'd just like to say a thank you, uh, to Mr. Ronnie Vanny. Uh, had a resident who had some, uh, damage happening to his pool. And it was probably less than an hour, whenever he got out there, dug a ditch and straightened everything up. So, just wanna, just put that out there and tell him thank you, and thank you to the administration for that.
I have nothing.
Working hard on that one.
I'm good.
I have, uh, two concerns, and they both have to do with Shieldsboro. The first is the, uh, amount of trash and stuff that's been piling up. And when can that guy get in there and remove all that debris?
We're trying to set up a meeting tomorrow with them. Um, court is... Court is either this Friday or next Friday. But we're trying to get in there with them now and see what we need to be done to move on.
And I had complaints from Shieldsboro One about the trees that are growing. They planted them very close to the, um, the curbing. And a lot of the trees and branches are hanging over.
Yep.
And I'm concerned about the fire department and people going through there.
On Ronnie's list to try to get them to go around cutting trees. He wanted to make sure it was okay, that we, it was ours in there to maintain.
Okay.
So, he'll be going around through there and cutting those.
Thank you very much. That's it?
Okay, we're gonna move on to project updates.
Okay, good evening. We have three, um, motions to discuss tonight. The first one on the agenda is item ten. Uh, this is for Hurricane Zeta Harbor dredging. This is a, a motion for work order amendment, um, for our services. For most projects, especially FEMA-funded projects, we use what's called their design curve. And it depends on the complexity of the project and also, um, the construction cost. Uh, so going into it, we make an estimate based on the PW amount, um, and that's what our fees are based on. As we know, these, this project came in higher than the anticipated amount. FEMA has approved these additional costs already. MEMA has, I'm sorry. And so, we're asking for a, a motion to approve the work order amendment for our services.
Okay. I will call for a motion to prove, approve the work order amendment for Hurricane Zeta Harbor dredging.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Smith. Do I have a second?
Davis, second.
Any discussion? Both the motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries seven-zero.
Okay, thank you. Item eleven is a motion to approve fire drive sidewalk project supplemental agreement for twenty additional days. Uh, this is basically a time extension change order. MDOT calls them supplemental agreements. This has been approved by MDOT through their commission, and so, we're asking the, the board to approve it as well. Uh, the reason we're requesting this, um, this came before a lot of you guys were on council, so I guess I'll explain it. Uh, this project, the Washington Street project, were bid at the same time. And so, MDOT has some requirements that are noted to proceed, has to be issued within, let's see, the two or three months of that bid date. So, the city asked the contractor to work on the Washington Street project first to finish that one up, which delayed them starting the fire drive project. So, we wanted to add some additional time to their contract, um, to offset some of the, the original... Like I said, all that's been approved. There's no extra cost to this. There's extra time.
Okay. Motion? I will call for a motion to approve the buyer drive sidewalk project supplemental agreement for twenty additional working days. A motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Smith. Do I have a second?
Second to Salvo.
Any discussion? Actually, I had a question about, I guess, while we're talking about the buyer drive sidewalks. The, I'm sure y'all are aware of it, on Carroll and Byer, that drain's starting to...
Erosion. We met with the contractor last week, and they're gonna come clean that up and then put some riprap in there. That drain inlet had to be higher, uh, so that it would tie into a smooth transition into Carroll. But that's why the drain inlet's higher, but there is an inlet on the side of it for the water to drain into. So, they're gonna put some riprap on that edge to keep that erosion from taking...
There was, before that erosion started to happen, too, there was a, a section of that sidewalk that was still holding water. So, I don't know.
Yeah, once that riprap is in, that'll allow everything to drain into that box.
Perfect. Sounds good. Any other discussion? Both the motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you. The final motion tonight is for the substantial completion. Uh, this is for the Old Town Depot Parking Improvement Project. Um, we did do a walkthrough with the contractor. We felt like it was substantially completed on August fifteenth. There's still some items that he's gotta finish up before we, um, you know, issue the final payment on that project. And again, we do have a one-year warranty. One of the main things we've been asking him to address, the side that they put down looked terrible. And so, they need to be sure they get some water on that, or they're gonna have to replace some of it. But this is just the substantial completion for the original contract.
I'll call for a motion to approve the substantial completion dated August fifteenth for the fifteen dash zero zero seven dash zero three-three Old Town Depot Revitalization Pro- Parking Improvement Project. Have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Holmes. Do I have a second?
Moynihan, seconds.
Any discussion? Both the motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries seven-zero.
Jason, when does the warranty start on that?
August fifteenth.
August fifteenth.
Yeah. So, we'll have a one-year warranty. If there's any failures, you know, that are related to construction items, then the contractor will be on the, the responsible... What we normally do is about two weeks before that warranty period expires, we'll have a note that pops up on our calendar. We'll go look at it with the city and see if there's anything that we need to have the contractor do. If it isn't brought to our tip. Those are all the motions we had. If you have any other questions on any other project that we have to... Um, turning lanes and Ireland Street, can you, you can just send me an update email or something, and you can tell us and check, just... Yeah, turning lanes, we met with the administration. We're gonna look at a different, uh, setting up the bids a little different, so we have some alternates with the base bid. And actually, and look at adding Rainier Street. Okay. That's southbound for... Yeah, for the boat launch. I think we finished the, I think we finished the survey work last week. We had to lay it out and submit the final plan.
Question? Um, do we have any plans about, um, painting crosswalks and stuff, like, near Harley the Gulf Church, all the way down that area?
So, our downtown striping plan that we've been working with the administration on covers, I don't know if we have, I don't know if we cover all the way to O.L.G. It's basically from the railroad tracks to, to Motlton or Almond and that area.
Okay. All right.
But that could be included in that.
Yeah.
We did meet with some Turk folks, officials, a couple of months ago about trying to look at the different striping in that area to help improve traffic flow and...
Yes, yes.
So, that might be...
Because of the school situation. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes.
I have a question. The sidewalk projects on Washington, is that where it's going to end, or do we have plans to extend further down? Just curious.
That's where it ends, right there.
By the park.
Tie it into Washington from the park right there.
All right, any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
We'll go ahead and move on to the city clerk's report. We'll go ahead and move on to the city clerk's report. I will call for a motion to approve the docket of claims twenty-five dash zero four four dated September second, twenty twenty-five and the amount of one million, two hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents. A motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Smith, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Lewis, any discussion? Vote the motion.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries seven zero. For the record, Councilwoman Holmes has left the room. I will call for a motion to approve the docket of claims twenty-five dash zero four five special dated September second, twenty twenty-five in the amount of one thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars. A motion?
Moynihan motions.
Do I have a second?
DeSalvo.
Second.
Any discussion? Vote the motion.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries six zero. Councilwoman Holmes has entered back into the meeting at six twenty and Councilman DeSalvo has left the room at six twenty. I will call for a motion to approve the docket of claims twenty-five dash zero four six special dated September second, twenty twenty-five in the amount of four hundred dollars.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Smith.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Holmes, any discussion? Vote the motion.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries six zero. Councilman DeSalvo re-entered the room at six twenty. I will call for a motion to approve the docket of claims twenty-five dash zero four seven special dated September second, twenty twenty-five in the amount of one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-two cents. A motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman DeSalvo, do I have a second?
Second, Smith.
Any discussion?
Did we get them funds back in already from MEMA?
I think some, are you talking about the Swift stuff?
Yes.
I think all of those jobs are contingent upon, they will not be paid until we get the fund. We have received some of them from MEMA, but the, the ones that we have not, they will not be paid until we get the funds in the account.
As soon as they come in, you better.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Vote the motion.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries seven zero. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, is there any questions, concerns? Okay, I will call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Smith, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, second by Councilman DeSalvo, any discussion? Vote the motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries seven zero. Okay, attorney's report?
I'm good.
Any need for executive session?
We do not, I do not.
I will call for a motion to recess the meeting to September ninth, twenty twenty-five at five thirty PM. A motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Smith, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman DeSalvo, any discussion? Vote the motion.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries seven.